Good evening. It is Monday, April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It's six thirty P. M. This is a Carney Board of Alderman meeting. Call the meeting to order.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shirley, have you had a chance to take a roll?
I have taken a roll. Everybody is present, and you do have a call.
We'll move on to personal appearances. Before we get on to our personal appearances, I will say that Marie Steiner is here this evening, and it's always good to see a friend in the audience and somebody that's been a good public servant and a champion for Carney. So our personal appearance this evening is the Older Americans Month proclamation, which will be received by Marie Steiner, Clay County Senior Services Board Member. If you can read the proposed proclamation, please.
A proclamation recognizing May two thousand and twenty-three as Older Americans Month. Whereas the city of Carney includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their time, wisdom, and experience to our community; and whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently; and whereas the city of Carney recognizes the need to create a community that offers the services and supports older adults may need to make choices about how they age; and whereas the city of Carney can work to build an even better community for our older residents by not limiting or thinking about aging, exploring and combating stereotypes, emphasizing the many positive aspects of aging, inspiring older adults to push past traditional boundaries, and embracing our community's diversity. Now therefore, I, Randy Pogue, Mayor of Carney, do hereby proclaim May two thousand and twenty-three to be Older Americans Month, and I urge every resident to celebrate our older citizens, help to create an inclusive society, and accept the challenge of flexible thinking around aging. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Carney, Missouri, the seventeenth day of April two thousand and twenty-three.
Do you have anything to add to that, Marie?
I just wanted to thank the board for your support of the senior center. I would also like to thank the staff there for their dedication and the progression of promoting the programs that they offer there that's increased the participation. Thank you. Next, the board. Boy, girl, boy, girl. How is that? You got us all?
I think it's good, but I'm sorry I'll have to close one more.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You don't want to miss anybody.
I'm sorry.
Next item this evening is public hearings. We do have a public hearing to receive public comments regarding rezoning of one oh seven East Main Street, C. General Commercial, to RP one low densities. Low dense is the planned residential district. Before I do open it up for public comment input, I would like to turn it over to David Pavlich, our Community Development Director, to provide a description of the request.
I can give a little information about that. One oh seven East Main Street is across the alley from City Hall on the east side of the CenturyLink Building. There used to be a little house there that was demolished late last year. It's in really, really bad shape. The lot is a substandard lot. It's not quite wide enough. It's not big enough square footage-wise and steep enough for a standard-sized lot. The rezoning request is to rezone from Commercial to RP one low density residential plan district to allow that to be an actual buildable lot and replace that old house that was demolished with a new house sometime this year. Planning zoning commission approved that application, but I think you guys will consider maybe ordinance later on in the meeting. At this time, it's for public comment.
Any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, I will open the floor for public comment. If you would wish to speak for or against a proposed rezoning of one oh seven East Main Street, I'll ask you to come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Yeah, if you want to speak now is the time.
Hi there. I'm Christine Huthink. I own Ked Management. I am the person that is proposing to build a new house there. So I just want to let you know that this house is going to be really, really similar to the one across the street here, one oh two East Main. We've worked really closely with Dennis Tuck, who is a local architect. We've maximized the space. It will be a four-bedroom, three-bedroom, or four-bedroom, three-back house with a full, big basement. I know, long and skinny, with a double garage in the back on the alley. So it'll be an extremely nice home when we're all done.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the proposed rezoning? Seeing nobody move, I will close the floor for public comment and input, and the public hearing is closed. We'll move on to the consent agenda this evening. Any items of discussion or questions from the board on the consent agenda? If not, can we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I make a motion to approve as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda passes as presented. Next, to officially end our previous-year legislative session, I would need a motion to entertain a motion, rather, to adjourn CNA DA to end our session. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, that ends our previous-year legislative session, and our two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four legislative session begins with the administration of oath of office of our newly-elected officials.
I'll start by swearing in our newly-elected alderman. So if you'd like to stand up and raise your right hand, I'm going to say, "I state your name," and when I say, "I state your name," just state your name. I state your name.
I do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications that I possess all the qualifications
of the office of alderman
of the office of alderman
as prescribed by law
as prescribed by law
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
and of the state of Missouri
and of the state of Missouri
the provisions of all laws of this state
the provisions of all laws of this state
affecting cities of the fourth class
affecting cities of the fourth class
and the ordinances of the city of Carney, Missouri
and the ordinances of the city of Carney, Missouri
and faithfully demean myself in office
and faithfully demean myself in office
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
I do.
I state your name.
I, Randy Pogue.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications
that I possess all the qualifications
of the office of mayor
of the office of mayor
as prescribed by law
as prescribed by law
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
and of the state of Missouri
and of the state of Missouri
the provisions of all laws of this state
the provisions of all law of this state
affecting cities of the fourth class
affecting cities of the fourth class
and the ordinances of the city of Carney, Missouri
and the ordinances of the city of Carney, Missouri
and faithfully demean myself in office
and faithfully demean myself in office
so help me God.
so help me God. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Next item of the agenda is election of our board president. Each year, the board of aldermen must nominate one of their own members to serve as board president for a term of one year. So at this time, I would like to open the floor for nominations of the position of board president.
Like nominate Dan Holt?
Alderman Lehman has a nomination of Dan Holt. Are there any other nominations from the board? Seeing none, can we entertain a motion to approve Alderman Lehman's recommendation to nominate Dan Holt as our board president?
Motion to approve.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Congratulations, Dan.
Thank you.
Next item is an election of the planning and zoning representative. Each year, the board of aldermen nominates and appoints one of their own members to serve as the representative of the Planning and Zoning Commission on a term of one year.
I can nominate Kathy Barker.
Are there any other nominations from the board? Seeing none, if we can entertain a motion to approve Dan Holt's recommendation of Kathy Barker as a planning and zoning representative.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Congratulations, Kathy. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Any items of discussion or questions from the board on our consent agenda? Seeing none, if we can entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda approves, is approved as presented. We'll move on to ordinances. A motion approving bill number seventeen, two thousand and twenty-three, presented by Chief of Police Tom O'Leary, and ordinance approving a management control agreement between Gladstone Police Department, Clay County Sheriff's Office, Excelsior Springs Police Department, Liberty Police Department, and Carney Police Department for purpose of data control, security, and protection of criminal justice information. Chief O'Leary?
Yeah, we're asking for your permission to sign an agreement with the listed agencies. In two thousand and twenty-one, the Carney Police Department purchased the Zerpa Report Writing System. At that time, Excelsior was the only other agency in the area utilizing that software, and they were kind of the host agency at that point. Liberty and Gladstone have now started using the same software, and Gladstone is now the host agency. What we're kind of asking for is just an agreement between all agencies involved, just state that we're protecting our, you know, any and all information that we're extracting from the Zerpa computer system.
Any questions from the board? If we could read the proposed ordinance on the first reading by title only, please?
An ordinance approving a management control agreement between Gladstone Police Department, Clay County Sheriff's Office, Excelsior Springs Police Department, Liberty Police Department, and Carney Police Department for purpose of data control, security, and protection of criminal justice information.
I make a motion to approve.
Yes, I could. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please?
An ordinance approving a management control agreement between Gladstone Police Department, Clay County Sheriff's Office, Excelsior Springs Police Department, Liberty Police Department, and Carney Police Department for purpose of data control, security, and protection of criminal justice information.
Make a motion to approve on second read?
Second.
All in favor? I guess pull the board. We're on the second reading. Go ahead.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
The vote unanimous, and ordinance passes on the second reading. Next item, under ordinances, a motion approving bill number eighteen dash two thousand and twenty-three, presented by David Pavlich, our Community Development Director, and ordinance of the city of Carney, Missouri, amending the Code of Ordnances, Chapter two oh five, Animal Regulations by repealing Municipal Code Section two oh five dash one ninety-five, Keeping a Pitbull Dogs Prohibited. Do you have anything to report?
I do have some comments tonight. This request was brought forward as a request by Alderman Lehman at a previous meeting, a couple of meetings ago, and the board said it'd be okay to prepare a repeal to be presented. The ordinance prepared. All that does is repeal the pit bull ordinance. Doesn't do, make any other changes or add any other restrictions. Some cities that have repealed the pit bull ordinances in the last several years might have passed other legislation that added restrictions, you know, repeal the pit bull ordinance, but pass other regulations in place of that. They might not have an opportunity to look into that if that's something the board wanted to do. The ordinance in the packet assembly, a repeal of our ordinance.
Could you give some examples of that?
Yeah, Excelsior Springs repealed theirs last year. They enacted some legislation where they identified dogs as dangerous, vicious, or possibly dangerous, and so they add some restrictions related to each of those qualifications. The city of Kansas City, when they repealed their pit bull ban, among their restrictions were required spay and neuter pit bull dogs. They might have added some other ones, but that comes to mind. City of Liberty, City of Smithdale, and Cameron were other communities that repealed pit bull bans, but I don't have further information on that if they had some other restrictions that they put in place.
Yeah, I believe some of the restrictions were obedience training, a possibility of increased homeowner's insurance
Right.
are some things I've seen
Right.
from research.
Right.
Okay. Any questions or items of discussion on this topic from the board? Okay. Seeing none, if we can entertain a motion to approve, I'm sorry, if you could read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please?
An ordinance of the city of Carney, Missouri, amending the Code of Ordnances, Chapter two oh five, Animal Regulations by repealing Municipal Code Section two oh five dash one nine five, Keeping of Pit Bull Dogs Prohibited.
Move to approve on the first reading.
Do we have a second? All right, seeing no board member being willing to put it to second, the motion dies on the table. The next item is motion approving bill number nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three, presented by David Pavlich, our Community Development Director, and ordinance amending Chapter four hundred of the Municipal Code, the Comprehensive Zoning Regulations of Carney, Missouri, rezoning approximately point one four acres at one oh seven East Main Street to RP one low-density residential plan district with a concept plan as requested by KED Management. This is what the topic that we had the public hearing on earlier. Do you have any additional staff, comment from staff or report?
No additional comments, other than I could repeat what I said earlier about.
I don't think that's necessary. We could read the proposal ordinance first time by title only, please?
An ordinance amending Chapter four hundred of the Municipal Code, the Comprehensive Zoning Regulations of Carney, Missouri, rezoning approximately point one four acres at one oh seven East Main Street to RP one low-density residential plan district with concept plan as requested by KED Management.
Motion to approve. The ordinance is read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please?
An ordinance amending Chapter four hundred of the Municipal Code, the Comprehensive Zoning Regulations of Carney, Missouri, rezoning approximately point one four acres at one oh seven East Main Street to RP one low-density residential plan district with concept plan as requested by KED Management.
So moved on second reading.
All second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
The vote unanimous, and the ordinance passes. We have no resolutions to discuss this EV Mayor's remarks. It's not on the agenda, but I would like to turn it over briefly to Chief Tom O'Leary. I believe he has the newest member of his police force in attendance tonight. I'd like you to introduce him to the board. He did not know that, but, you know, that's what we're going to do.
We do. This is Jacob. I'm going to butcher his last name, workfully. Yeah, he came to us with a nickname of Waffles, but he seems okay with it. He's been in our FTO program for four, five weeks. He comes to us with some experience, and he's just freezing right through our program. Happy to have him.
Great. Yeah, welcome and look forward to continuing to work with you, sir.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes. Thank you for that, chief. First item under Mayor's Communications is I'm asking the board's recommendation and approval to reappoint Jerry Spencer as the Carney Chamber of Commerce liaison for an additional year term.
I'll make a motion.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Congratulations, Jerry, and thanks for continuing to serve in that capacity. Next is for the board to approve my recommendation to reappoint Dan Holt as our park board representative. If we can entertain a motion to approve Dan Holt in that position for another year.
I make a motion to approve Dan Holt as park board representative.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, Dan, for your continued service. Last item under, I'm sorry, second to last item under Mayor's Communications this evening is I am asking for the board to approve my appointment of Shannon Maguire. He is a city of Carney resident. He responded to our social media requests, seeing if there would be anybody that would be willing to serve in the capacity on our Board of Adjustments for a five-year term. I met with Shannon, with David Pavlich and Sheila. He is a city planner for the City Elite Summit, extremely qualified to serve in this capacity and willing to do so. So I'm asking the board to approve my appointment of Shannon Maguire to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? He's not here tonight, but he'll fill that capacity well. Last item I want to talk to the board about is I'm really excited about our first-ever Mayor and Board of Alderman Goal and Priority Setting Session. We've got a lot going on in the community, and as we know, decisions that we're making daily are going to impact our community for many years to come. So I'm going to throw out three dates, and I'll definitely put it in an email. But what will work for our consultant and the lady that we're looking to engage to lead this session, the meetings that are available to us will be Monday, August twenty-first, Friday, August twenty-fifth, or Tuesday, September fifth. They would be during the day. Hopefully, that gives the board plenty of time to just arrange work schedules and other schedules. So I'll put that into an email, and we'll see what works best for the board so we can get our goal and priority session for this year scheduled. That concludes my mayor's remarks, and I will move forward to the city administrator's report.
The first person that I will turn this over to is Eric Marshall, our park director. He's going to cover A, B, and something that's not on the agenda.
Okay. Thanks, Sheila. Tomorrow night at our park board meeting at six thirty right here, our consultants from Water's Edge Aquatics will be in attendance. They will go over the preview of the survey, the online survey, that we plan to release on Wednesday. And the public is invited to attend that meeting. And if you're unable to attend, it will be broadcast on YouTube. Then on Monday, April twenty-fourth, at the High School Commons, we will have a public input session for the general public to come, voice their concerns and comments and things of that. Again, Lauren will be there. Lauren Osborne will be there directing that meeting and guiding us and the public through the different steps of what all entails in the planning of a proposed aquatic swimming facility. That again is from five thirty to seven P. M. Monday, April twenty-fourth, at the High School Commons area. I did mention that the survey, we anticipate going live with the survey on Wednesday at some point during the day. I did want to let you know that the park department did receive a couple of pieces of new equipment within the last week. We received our new tractor. We traded in our old tractor and got a upgraded tractor with some more attachments. And also, we received our new trailer to haul our mowers and different equipment around town. So those have been delivered to us, and we're excited already to put those to use.
And this one's finally wide enough?
It is.
Any questions from the board on our park director's report?
I would like to point out that the survey questions are at the dais for each of you to look over. If you do look them over and have an issue, I see. Do you see? Okay, I thought, oh, no, Alderman Lehman didn't get one. But look it over, please, and if you don't have any concerns, please get back to staff right away.
I appreciate the opportunity to review that before it gets out. Thank you.
Yeah, and then Donnie wanted to talk about something.
I'm just letting the board know that we did acquire an asphalt roller. It's a ham roller with three hundred hours that we got from United Rentals. After some deliberation about new ones, the new ones were about sixty thousand dollars, and they were delayed until the last quarter of this year or the first quarter of next year. So after some discussions with David and looking at this roller, we acquired one from United Rentals for twenty-seven thousand, gently used. I think it'll do, serve us well. No need to spend the money on or wait on a new one. And we have acquired the concrete breaker for the skid steer. We recognize that with the sidewalk projects that we were doing, it was getting kind of difficult to not be able to break those up and pull them out and cause them more damage. So we acquired one of those from Perkins Rentals that's gently used for forty-two hundred dollars. So we're trying to be good stewards of the city's money and still get the equipment that we need to continue getting our work done.
Great. It's a good report. Thank you, sir.
The next item is the Spirit Committee will be meeting at City Hall on Thursday, April twenty-seventh, at six thirty P. M. It is an open-to-the-public meeting. They're going to actually, Poak Jamie Grayson will be here and will be going over the results of the community survey. And so it will be the very first step to kind of talk about what the small group conversations are going to look like. But I would encourage, we will record it. It will be livestreamed. And also, anyone is welcome to attend that meeting and ask whatever questions that they have. And then I guess that's still me. And then the last thing I have is the next regular board meeting will be on Monday, May first, at six thirty P. M., and that's all I have, mayor.
Great. We'll go on to Alderman Discussion. Alderman Barker?
I would just like to thank the chamber. I attended the Carney Hiring Fair last week on Thursday, and I believe, Jack, I'm sorry, Jerry could probably speak to it better, but I think it was a pretty good success. We had, I believe, twenty or twenty-one employers in the area and almost fifty people who came in looking for positions. So we're a growing community with lots of opportunities for people. So always think about Carney first when you're looking for a place to work.
Alderman Lehman?
I'd just like to congratulate Dan and Kathy and you for your reelection and look forward to serving with you for longer now.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Holt?
Well, I've had several people come up to me and when they asked me if we got our bucket fixed, they're all excited for the upcoming park to open. However, it's been quite cold. I don't think anybody wanted to be out there getting wet. But they were very aware that the bucket was broke last year, and they want to make sure that we got it fixed and had it ready to go. And I assured everybody that it is, and they can't wait to get the park going again. So summer's here. The leaves came out, which means kids are going to want to use the park. So everybody seems to be excited, and I like that. That was, that was money well spent.
I think our city administrator should get the first dunk this year.
I agree.
Since you did last year.
That's what I'm saying.
You guys are so kind.
I make a motion. Maybe we should include our finance branch. Maybe we should include our finance director.
Do you have anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Alderman Spencer?
I just will pretty much say ditto, and a huge thanks to the Kearney Chamber of Commerce for hosting this Hiring Fair. It was their third year, and it has grown every year, so this was a really good thing for our community. Quite a few people were hired.
That's great. Congratulations to our two newly-elected aldermen, and thank you to the residents for picking me to continue to serve in this capacity. It's quite the honor to lead our city and work with such a great group of public servants and staff, so thank you for that. With that, we do have an executive session. Notice that this meeting a closed session per RSMO 610021 subsection 13, individually identifiable personal or records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment in the meeting, and we will adjourn from there. So if we could consider a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
All second.
Roll call vote?
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderwoman Holt, I mean Alderman Holt, sorry. Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Votes unanimous, this concludes our public portion of the meeting. Everybody have a good night, thank you.